Welcome to the September fifteenth, uh, school board meeting. And another victory Monday for our birds. Can't say that about the Dolphins. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Buchanan, here. Mrs. Ekinchebly, here. Mrs. Geist?
Here.
Mrs. Gerlach?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Ober.
Here.
Vice President Kelly?
Here.
President Morgan?
Here. And we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. We had a teacher pass away. Stacy, the name of that teacher, please?
A former teacher at Truman, Scott Barnes, passed away recently.
And also, moment of silence for our first responders in all of our troops, men and women overseas to protect us every day.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, with its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, we have a little bit of, I guess, sad news, good news. This lovely lady next to me, this is her last meeting. Has become a very good friend of mine. Even though she's the one who got me involved in all this, I will forgive her for that. But, um, she's always been there by my side for questions as a friend, coworker. You're never gonna find a person more caring, giving, and more professional than this woman right next to me. She's gonna be missed by this whole school district dearly. She does all the work behind the scenes. And chasing me and Michael and David around, that's a full-time job all on its own. So I just wanna thank her from the deepest of my heart for everything she's done. And I wish her luck in her future and spending a wonderful time with her grandkids. And, uh, this is Miss Mary Ann Wagner, everybody.
Thank you.
Get it up there. Ah, crap.
September Board Meeting. I hope everyone had a great start to the school year. It is wonderful to have our students back in our schools and to see our programs in academic, athletics, activities, and the arts back in action. I wanted to express my thanks and gratitude to the entire staff of the Bristol Township School District for working hard to ensure a positive and supportive opening of the school year. The district administrative team takes the time to go to all the schools for arrival and departure for the first couple of days. And it was great seeing all of our staff members go above and beyond to make sure that children and parents felt welcome and comfortable as we began this new school year. I also wanna encourage everyone to come out to our back-to-school nights, which have already begun and are running throughout the next couple of weeks. Always exciting evenings as parents get to meet the educators who will have such an impact on their child's lives. We do our best to make sure that our schools are places with an inviting atmosphere where parents can feel welcome and kids can feel comfortable. It is our goal that at the end of these evenings, parents will believe that their children are in schools staffed by hard-working, enthusiastic professionals who truly care about their students. Now, as we get to set to make a great year memories, let's take a look back at all that we accomplished and enjoyed last year. Mr. Fow. Uh, what we all wanna see is our kids doing well, our students achieving. And, uh, you know, we know that the most important step to that is having outstanding teachers in the classroom. And one thing I'd like to say, the reality is, we're all support staff. The most important work is done with our kids, with our students, each and every day by the teachers who are in front of them. So that leads to the fact that, Amy, we have a very impressive group of new teachers this year. And we're excited to have them onboard. And we look forward to all the great things that they will do with our students. I know you work very hard in your team in providing them the support they need to be successful. So I now like to turn it over to you and have them introduce themselves to the board and let them know that we're very happy to have them in our school community. Welcome and thank you. Amy?
I'm gonna have them come up to the podium, make sure that it's turned on one at a time, and just introduce yourself, your name, where you're teaching, and if you're a content area teacher, grade level, whatever particular area that is. We have probably over, close to forty, new teachers with us this year in the district. Some of them were Truman graduates. And so we're very happy to welcome them back. But above all, we have a really great group of hard-working, professional educators here who are joining our already wonderful group of professional educators. And I'm very pleased to introduce them all to you. So we'll start with, why don't we start in the back? Go ahead.
My name is Kylie Winchester. I am at Mill Creek, and I do supplemental learning support.
Welcome. Thank you.
My name is Ava Gray. I'm also at Mill Creek, and I am a second-grade teacher.
My name is Ella McMahon, and I'm the second-grade LOA at Mill Creek.
My name is Carly Atkins, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Mill Creek.
My name is Remi Skolnick, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Mill Creek.
My name is Allison Solano, and I'm a second-grade autistic support teacher at Brookwood.
See, I'm hoping you're watching this, 'cause this is what, you know, Mary Ann does.
Hi, my name is Mary O'Connell, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Brookwood. Nice to meet you.
How's it going? I'm Colin Matecki. I'm at Brookwood Elementary, and I do emotional support, grades kindergarten through second grade.
Hi, my name's Jen Kralzik. I am at Brookwood, and I do supplemental learning support as well as emotional support for K to two.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amber Kylie. I'm a third-grade teacher at Brookwood Elementary.
Good evening, Maria Bennet, um, learning support for Truman.
Hello, I'm Zach Zalzig. I'm an eighth-grade ELA teacher at Armstrong Middle.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Brien. I'm at Armstrong as well, and I'm an autistic support teacher.
Hi, my name is Josh Everett. I'm the sixth to eighth chorus teacher at Ben Franklin.
Hi, I'm Omni White, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Keystone Elementary.
Hello, I'm Shion Weston. I teach first grade at Keystone.
Hello, my name is Danielle Andrini. I teach first grade at Keystone Elementary.
Hi, my name is Jordan Hodley, and I'm fourth grade at Keystone Elementary.
Hi, everyone, my name's Katie Mensch. I'm fifth grade ELA at Keystone Elementary.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia Devilla. I am autistic support for second grade at Keystone.
Hello, my name is Emily Ma. I am K through five, general music and chorus, LOA at Brookwood Elementary.
Mark Devlin, Truman, math.
Hello, I'm Denise Tafaleli, and I'm also at Truman on the math team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Tornetta. I am at Truman High School as well, math team.
My name is Arif Akanjim, math teacher at Truman High School.
My name's Lauren Vogt. I'm the photography teacher at Truman. It's nice to meet everybody.
Well, thank you. I'm not gonna ask what happened in the math department at Truman, but... Michael's gonna ask you all to stay, but I'm gonna tell you you can leave. So you have everything to get ready for tomorrow. So, but thank you all, and I'm sure Mike has something to say.
Thank you, President Morgan. Thank you all. And that concludes my report for this evening. I now turn it over to Mr. Morgan to make our way through the remainder of the agenda.
Student Advisory Council. Introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening, I'm Paige Ingle. Truman's Back-to-School Night is this Wednesday, the seventeenth. National Honor Society for our juniors and seniors averaging ninety percent or higher. Their applications are open. Our homecoming pep rally theme is Disney, and I know the seniors' skit theme is High School Musical. The fall plays are All My Plans Are Dead and a student-written and directed piece, Out of Service by Jacob Geist. Fall sports are in full swing with football, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, volleyball, and cross-country, and cheerleading. Grade level assemblies were last week, and we have Alice Training this week. And the 2026 musical was just announced as Beelzeus, another pilot for Truman. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Emrich. The girls' soccer won eight-oh last week. Clubs are starting up again. The new tiger time period has been implemented. The Bucks don enrollment courses started last week. Freshman class officer elections are happening. Homecoming dance is October first, and the game is on October third. And varsity boys soccer had a win today, five-nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you so much. Okay, David, Solicitor Report?
Yes, an executive session was held tonight starting at six-thirty PM. It ended just before this meeting started. All board members were present, as well as Mr. Nidi and Dr. Polsor. The following items were discussed: litigation, real estate, collective bargaining, and informational items. And that is my report.
Facilities and Committee Reports. Facilities and Operations, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. President. August reports for record. August district vehicle repair cost twelve-hundred-and-ninety dollars, forty-eight cents. Three pieces of kitchen equipment were repaired at a cost of eleven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Five-hundred-and-twenty-nine work orders were completed. Operations Department projects, all buildings, landscape, and basins were manicured for the start of school year. All sports fields were cut, lined, and ready for fall sports. Our, uh, our maintenance department delivered, um, backpacks to all the schools, working with Bernadette Hana. All of our rubber playgrounds were repaired at the elementary schools. And all summer projects were completed by the first day of school. That all in my report.
Thank you, Michael. Special shout-out to you guys, you're the unsung heroes. Thank you. Curriculum, Special Education, Co-curricular Policy, Technology, Public Relations, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We had our meeting on September eleventh here in the boardroom. Mr. Finley presented information about organizational memberships for music. They will be submitting their memberships so that students can participate in county and state band events. The teachers gain a lot of resources from these memberships, and these memberships will appear on the October Board Agenda for Approval. Additionally, he presented information on a textbook that is needed for our Spanish class, Spanish Heritage Speakers class. It's the first year for the class, although it was approved last year. It's for students whose primary language is Spanish, but they need help mastering the other components of the language, such as writing and reading. There are fifteen students in the class currently, and next year, the hope is to run this class along with Spanish Heritage, too. Additionally, all classes will be celebrating Constitution Day this Wednesday, and we will be posting pictures on the webpage and social media after those events. In Special Education, Dr. Schultz and her team were able to work over the summer to update the students who were classified as McKinney-Vento, resulting in a large cost savings for transportation for the district. We reviewed several policies, such as 102, academic standards, 105 curriculum, 123 interscholastic athletics, 918, parent-family engagement, 626 fiscal compliance, 626.1 travel policy. The policies were reviewed, and the committee will give updates to me, Mrs. Coleman, by ten-one, and then will be sent to the full board for review prior to the October Board Meeting. In federal programs, we're working with the Heritage Conservancy again this year for after-school clubs. Teachers are working alongside the Heritage Conservancy educators, using their provided curriculum, leading hands-on, leading students in hands-on inquiry-based lessons that connect classroom science concepts to real-world environmental issues. Activities include nature investigations, interactive projects, and conservation-focused discussions. On this month's agenda for approval, there are four school-wide plans for Brookwood, Franklin, Armstrong, and Truman. These are for approval because they are designated as a CSI or TSI school. Additionally, we have two schools who are looking to add some interesting supplemental activities to different classrooms. Ms. Kylie, who's one of our new teachers here this year, is a third-grade teacher at Brookwood, and she's going to be using something called NFL Elementary, which is a supplementary program to engage her students. It encompasses all curricular areas plus the NFL. And additionally, at Armstrong, Ms. Fox, who's the STEM teacher there, will be holding an esports club this year, and we hope to further expand the club to Franklin and Truman in the coming months, potentially next year. This club operates at no cost to the district. And I just wanted to mention that we did have many of our new teachers here this evening. Some were not able to come, and we will have them at a later board meeting for introduction. That concludes my report. Our next meeting is October sixteenth at six PM. Thank you.
Thank you. IU Legislative Council, that's me. Our next meeting is next week. I will forward the minutes off them. Ms. Wagner, PSBA Liaison, Amanda?
Thank you. I just wanted to share from an article about the Senate passing the Baker School Bus Safety Bill. By strengthening penalties and tightening safety requirements, Senator Lisa Baker said a clear message will be sent that reckless driving around school buses will not be tolerated. Legislation sponsored by Senator Baker, Republican Lehman Township, to enhance school bus safety and better protect children traveling to and from school has been approved by the Senate. The Senate bill increases the required stopping distance for drivers approaching from the opposite direction when a school bus is stopped with its red flashing, with its red lights flashing, expanding the buffer from ten feet to fifteen feet. It also raises penalties for violations, including higher fines and license suspensions for repeat offenders, and mandates additional driver education or examinations. During Operation Safe Stop in October 2024, Baker said law enforcement and bus drivers across a mere twenty-two school districts reported one-hundred-and-thirty-one violations in a single day, underscoring the urgency of these reforms. With the Senate approval, we are one step closer to enacting stronger safeguards for students across the Commonwealth. The bill now heads to the House of Representatives for consideration. And I will send that to Mrs. Wagner for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, the fall season is upon us, and the township is inviting everyone on Saturday, September twentieth, for the Fall Festival. It starts at eleven AM to four PM. It's the biggest event of the year with food trucks, crafts, kid-friendly activities, inflatable moon bounces, games, photo booth, and numerous other activities. There'll be about eighty vendors there, raffle baskets, fifty-fifty, so, so much more. So mark your counter, kick off the fall season at the best fall festival in Bucks County. See you there. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Bucks County Technical High School, Kelly?
Yes, our meeting was held on Monday, August twenty-fifth. We had a successful opening of the 2025-26 school year, welcoming three-hundred-and-eighty-three freshmen. Congrats to Braden Holden. He won first place in CNC Access at the Skills USA Conference. This was a national competition, so he came in first in the nation. We approved a partnership agreement with Yamaha Motors, giving our students instruction and certifications currently only offered to Yamaha employees. We also accepted the Carl D. Perkins Grant in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eleven dollars for July first through June thirtieth of 2026. This is about thirty thousand higher than last year. September twenty-fifth is our back-to-school night. The newsletter is attached to board docs for your review, and our next meeting is Monday, September twenty-ninth, at seven-thirty at the tech school. Thank you.
Finance, insurance, transportation, Amber?
Good evening. The Finance Committee meeting was held on Wednesday, September tenth, 2025, in the Administration Building. Board member present was Mrs. Kelly. The meeting was also attended by several members of the administrative team. Department reports provided by Operations, Food Service, and Technology. Billings provided for the board members to review. In addition, the following items were presented and reviewed: Settlement Agreement with IMC Construction, Oliver Fire Protection and Security Renewal, FDR Middle School Cleanup, Lumen Phone Service Renewal, Bus Patrol Implementation. And other miscellaneous items were discussed, such as structural roof evaluation of Armstrong from RVE for the Solar Schools Project, the upcoming audit, and the PA State Budget, which has yet to be passed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have any public participation agenda items? Okay, approval of minutes, approve the minutes of August eighteen, 2025. Stacy, Constance, any questions on a motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Treasurers Report?
As of August thirty-first, 2025, the cash balance in the cash concentration account was ten million, two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars and seven cents. The overall investment account balances totaled twenty-three million, five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, as of the same date. That concludes my report.
Okay, approve the Treasurers Report, subject to audit?
So moved.
Chris?
Second.
Donna, questions on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Administrative Reports, the 2025 August Operations Report, the 2025 August Mercantile Tax Report. 2025 September Enrollment Approval Administrative Reports will be accepted in a minute, subject to audit. Do we have any unfinished business?
We do not.
Okay. Appointment to Bucks County Technical High School Authority, appoint Stacy B. Gerlach as Bristol Township School District Representative to Bucks County Technical High School Authority for a five-year term beginning January 2026, expiring January 2031.
So moved.
Chris?
Second.
Constance, questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. I really don't wanna read this one, but I will. Accept the letter of retirement from Mary Ann Wagner as School Board Secretary effective October first, 2025, as presented. Stacy?
Second.
Questions on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No, all passes nine-zero.
Do we have an option or not?
Do we have an option or not?
I know, right? Did we say no?
I said, I said, any nays. Nay means no, as I said. Chris, you're going to go on the outside in the hallway soon. School Board Secretary appointee, persuade section four oh three to school code, Regina, oh boy, Tyshack, at School Board Secretary for a remainder of the four-year term beginning October one, 2025, through June thirty of 2029, with a stipend of $6,500 per year. Chris?
Second.
Crystal or Amanda? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carries nine-zero. Approve the $72,280 Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant awarded to Keystone Elementary School.
So moved.
That was Grace and Constance. Questions on the motion?
It's fabulous.
Well, that wasn't a question. All in favor?
It's fabulous.
It's approved.
Let me rephrase that into a form of a question.
All in favor, nine-zero. Donation pursuant to Bristol Township School Policy 702. Accept the donation from Nordstrom Back to School Campaign with approximate value of $1,400. The donation is listed below. Kelly? Chris? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any disapprove? Question? Motion carries nine-zero. Release and Settlement Agreement. Approve the release and settlement agreement as presented. Stacy? Constance? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any disapprove? Motion carries nine-zero. Settlement Agreement. Approve the proposed settlement agreement at IMC Construction, the amount of $1,800,000 as presented. Constance? Crystal? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Approve the agreement between the Bristol Township School District and the Serini Law Group as presented. Stacy? Constance? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Approve the slate of candidates for 2025-2026 PSBA Officers Election as presented. Kelly?
Second.
Amanda? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented, Superintendent Policy Items thirteen-ten and thirteen-eleven, Finance and Operations fourteen-three, fourteen-four, Curriculum Instruction Item fifteen-one, Special Education Item sixteen-one through sixteen-five, All Personnel seventeen-one through seventeen-eleven.
So moved.
Chris? Constance? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Payment of Salaries. Approve the amount of the district's payroll for the month of August 2025, in the amount of $4,496,695.82. Kelly? Donna? Questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. Approve the payment of bills for the month of September 2025 as follows. Chris? Stacy? Questions on the motion? Yeah, listed below. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine-zero. I think that does it, right? Do we have any correspondents?
We do not.
Okay. Other business?
There is none.
All right, we have one public speaker. A reminder, you have three minutes. Please, no yelling and screaming. And Frank Barnhart?
Good evening, Mr. President Morgan. I do respect your rules and regulations. I appreciate that. Recently, my daughter just turned eleven, and she brought to my attention that the school, Armstrong, was teaching about sexual education. In my opinion, I don't think the children, being that young, should be learning about sexuality, whether it be boys or girls, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Now, I'm really not sure how to go about questioning. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, you can start attending curriculum meetings, sir, and ask some questions there. Mr. Niddy's always available by email, so is Amy, so am I. All right?
Is it okay if I give my opinion on it, though, real fast?
You got a minute, and, yeah, you got two minutes, my friend. Go.
In my opinion, and I'm sure yourself, Mr. Oliver, or Mr. Obermann, know that I've been a correctional officer for twenty-five years, in my opinion, I think the children learning about sexuality at such a young age can cause confusion, because now they want to not just explore themselves, but explore the other sex also. So I would firmly recommend that they just focus on high school, teach it there, but that's just my suggestion, my recommendation. That's all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you for your concern. And like I said, the curriculum meeting is advertised, and if you have any other questions, you know how to get ahold of us, right?
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for your respect. Appreciate it. Don't call me sir, that's my daddy. The next meeting will be Monday, October twentieth, 2025. They'll have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly? All in favor? Nobody going to oppose that one. All have a good, all three of us have a great evening, so we'll see you at the next meeting. Take care, and good night now.